Missing, um, we are missing the Vice Mayor. Okay, and have you got him, can you get him on his cellphone and we'll just put him on speakerphone?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, so we will, we will do that. And we are, are we up and running?
I am in good light.
Facebook, okay, so go ahead and I'll, we'll have a little explanation of having an occasional IT glitch here that we're working our way through, okay? Okay, all right, we are live, this is Facebook, uh, and we are going to do our first board meeting where we have a number of our board members who are phoning in and who are also videoing in. So we're gonna work our way through this, perhaps a, a little awkward at first, but we're gonna, we're gonna first do a roll call so we'll know that we've got a quorum in place. So, uh, I am visually seeing Alderman Carver from Ward 1, Alderman Sistrunk?
Yep.
All right, Alderman Sistrunk can check in, Alderman Little?
I'm here.
All right, Alderman Little is here from Ward 3, Alderman Walker?
Here.
Alderman Walker is here from Ward 4, Alderman Beatty?
Right.
All right, I have Alderman Beatty from Ward 5. Vice Mayor Perkins?
I'm here, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And then Alderman Vaughn.
Here.
All right, so we have a, uh, quorum and we have a, uh, full attendance, all seven Aldermen are either, uh, either here or on the phone or perhaps on video, we're not, we're not on video, are we ma'am? I just saw Alderman Walker pop up, okay, all right, so let's, let's kinda set the, set the tone for the meeting if you would. Uh, what we're gonna do is we're gonna, uh, I'll call the meeting to order now that we have a, have a, uh, quorum, um, where I'm gonna dispense with a pledge since it's somewhat odd for some of us to be here and some not. But we will have, uh, an invitation offered by Alderman Vaughn, so if you will do that, Alderman Vaughn, we will then move into board business. Yes sir, please.
Also we all rise on the high horse, you know, here and over the standing, not following up gas, but people hitting big thirty. But you alive, it's, it's to be late, but most of all, Father, that you directed us to fulfill this, we thank you. Pray now, Father God, that you name Jesus, for we go, that you will preach with him in the ball out. Father God, that we be worthy to stand, and for these young people to make this, that you blessed us, mate. We pray for what you already have arrived as achieved, Father God, and would you thank you for what you got on the journey tonight, Father God, that we're always in your favor. Father God, would you thank you for being the God that you are, the one that hides no heaven and sky, which is our first. We thank you for the one that rules and governs, Father God, we thank you. For Father God, we know that fire is nothing but a test of time, we know that by and by everything will be all right. We know prayer will lead us, Father, but the action to, to the flesh of God. It will be collected in one mind, and give all praise and honor to you, Father, because we know your word, Father. Blessed are we, blessed are our family, and protect you, Father, for this fire, Father God, that you try to do the best that you can, but still. Thank you, my own none, would you say?
Thank you. All right, um, again, since this is sort of a new, sort of new to us, what I'm gonna do is try to make this flow as smoothly as possible, and as I said, I can't see everyone, what we will do is, uh, we'll go ward by ward and everyone can provide us input, um, as we go through these various items. Um, I wanna make sure everyone has a chance to voice their thoughts, and so if you would, when you're, when you're done speaking, if you would just let me know that you're done so that we can move on to the next ward, and I will also be sure I give everyone time to unmute their phones, so uh, for the people in the audience here who are, I am so proud to see, very socially spaced out, socially distanced, you make sure that your phone is on mute, please, uh, before we get into the board meeting. Okay, so if we will, we'll take up this agenda, uh, our agenda for the evening, everyone should have a copy, we have items that are, uh, shown to be on consent, which came up from the work session, I have one item that I would like to add, I think, um, Mr. Latimer sent that out to you earlier today, it would be a second resolution, um, for the Mayor and Board of Aldermen to deal with, uh, the pandemic using the opportunity to have a, uh, curfew, and I'm happy to explain my, my, um, thoughts in doing that, but we can wait to do that if, uh, I will be adding that to the agenda, it should be on the agenda that is here at the table, um, it would be the last, it'd be item D under Mayor's Business, so I've added that one. Does anyone have any changes that they wish to make to the agenda or to the consent agenda, Alderman, uh, Carver? No changes from Alderman Carver, Alderman Sistrunk?
No.
No changes, Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
All right, Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Uh, Alderman Beatty?
Uh, no ma'am.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yes, Mayor, just remove item number, Roman number nine, uh, B from the consent agenda, please.
Okay, nine B from the consent agenda, all right?
Yes ma'am.
I will show that to be removed from the consent agenda. Anything further, Vice Mayor?
No ma'am, thank you, Mayor.
All right. And Alderman Vaughn?
No.
Nothing, all right, having said that, I need a motion to approve the official agenda with the consent items as amended.
Say move.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, uh, I need an identification with that, I think I heard Alderman Beatty's voice?
I'll, I'll check it out.
Okay, Alderman, I'll show Alderman Beatty is having seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye as the City Clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
Alderman Little.
Aye.
Alderman Vaughn.
Aye.
Alderman Beatty.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Aye.
Alderman Vaughn.
All right. All right, it is unanimous, the, the agenda with the consented items as, as, um, amended are approved. I will now read the consented items from, from, uh, from the agenda. First is consideration of the minutes of the March 3rd, 2020 Register Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the March 13th, 2020 Work Session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the March 17th, 2020 Recession Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Consideration of the minutes of the March 20th, 2020 Special Call Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. And consideration of the minutes of the March 24th, 2020 Special Call Meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. And we then have, uh, item C under Mayor's Business is consideration of the continuance of a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency. Under Board Business, we have consideration to appoint Reverend Dr. Ronnie Tucker to fill a vacancy for the Library Board of Trustees for a term appointment of October 1st, 2019 to September 30th, 2024. Under Airport Business, we have request approval for leasing the tillable land and newly cleared land located at George M. Bryan Field south and west of the runway and taxiway and inside the fence area for one year to Mr. Kyle Knight in the amount of $2,951. Under the Fire Department, we have request permission to issue a commercial burn permit to Kim Moreland to burn a cleared debris associated with a construction project located at 1769 Louisville Street, scheduled after May 1st, 2020. Under Parks, we have consideration of the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the City of Starkville and Southern Foundation for Homeless Children, Inc., conditioned upon the feeding program starting no earlier than June the 1st, 2020, and it complying with all applicable orders, rules, and regulations relating to curbing the spread of COVID-19. Under the Police Department, we have consideration of the approval of an agreement with A.D. and S. Inc. Turnkey Solutions for the acquisition of a fingerprint machine kiosk with costs funded through a JAG grant. Under Utilities, we have number one, request authorization to accept the lowest and best quote from Parks and Parks Water Well Service, Inc. in the amount of $9,600 to repair the motor, number 7 well pump at the Bluefield location. Number two is request authorization to accept the lowest and best bid from Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories in the amount of $658,320 for the relay panels and equipment system for the 1616913 KV Southwest Starkville Substation. And third, request authorization to accept the lowest and best bid from SAST America, Inc., CO, HV Sales, Inc. in the amount of $116,243.21 for the substation battery system for the 1616913 KV Southwest Starkville Substation. And that concludes the consent agenda items. Yes sir, my pleasure. All right, under announcements, um, I am going to just kinda bring everybody up to date, um, as of today for COVID, we'll call it the COVID-19 update, uh, for Starkville and Oktobah County, as of this morning, April 7th, 2020, there are 29 cases in Oktobah County, in Mississippi, there are 1,915 cases, and, and there are 59 deaths. And so that is, that is kinda where we are as it relates to this, and that is obviously what makes this, uh, effort that we are doing as we're trying to socially distance, and we have people calling in, imperative that we respect the concerns of having that, um, safe space from others, and again, recommending to everyone who is able to stay home to do so and go only out for essential purposes. And so, uh, from that standpoint, I will, uh, conclude any remarks I have and we can move into the Board's business, do, do the, do the Board have any remarks? Alderman Carver, any remarks?
One remark I've got is just the extraordinary job that the Police Department's doing, and all these are perilous times, but continually, I know you update us, and, uh, just to thank y'all for what you do, also sanitation department has been running some, uh, routes with limited crew, but they're still doing a good job for the most part, people, uh, typically take about two weeks to understand when the trash is gonna get picked up, I think that the public understands, it's normally two days, and which of those two days, uh, they're getting picked up, so one thing we've talked again and again about is continuity of operations and how to kinda run with a skeleton crew, and, uh, to make that work, the city, this is the first time we've tried some of these things, I think, um, I think they're starting to work, I just think it takes a little time, we're kinda getting into that uh, second week phase of some of this stuff, so again, thanks especially, uh, all of our department heads, obviously, but the Police Department and Sanitation, Environmental Services.
Okay, all right, thank you, Alderman Sistrunk, any remarks from you?
No, nothing from me.
Okay, Alderman Little?
Nothing from me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
All right, um, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman Vaughn?
Got something, ma'am, thank you so much. Again, I know we, uh, mentioned that the last board meeting about Starkville, uh, yeah, we just want to commit, uh, congratulations, uh, to our council which called it corporate staff again, and players have achieved, have won state championship, and that made them back to back to the champion, I know school is down, and all this is going on, and they haven't been recognized for their great achievements. Thank God for them, and thank for what all they have done, and number two, coronavirus, so with this coronavirus, we gotta maintain our faith, first of all, we gotta maintain that. Second, we gotta be obedient, we gotta respect one another, we gotta, we gotta have a social distance from one another, and, and some of the stores, they got, they got acres in the store, they got, they got squares in the store, and all of us, the cheeses that come through here, we got to maintain our social distance. And I, and I try to encourage the parents, if you got them kids, if you don't need them to be with you, let them stay at home, don't bring them out so that we can maintain the social distance from everyone, and then you gotta respect one another, I, I, I want to respect another man, ma'am, just tell them personally, hey, give me my space, give me my space, and that's what we gotta do, and most of all, in order for them to do these things, we gotta love one another. We gotta love one another, if you love me, you're not gonna do nothing to hurt me, if you love me, you're gonna respect me, what I stand for, if you love me. And faith and obedience and respect of God, sir, obedience is better than sacrifice. So we, we, so, we, we gotta obey the land of the Lord, and then we gotta obey the laws of this land, that's what we gotta do. And so, and some of them got this confused about it, but we gotta be obedient, and faith is the stuff of faith, that hopefully never disappears and I think so we can't go anywhere without having faith, and we can't profoundly faith without having faith, we gotta be obedient, we gotta respect one another, but most of all, we gotta love one another to get where we gotta go, if we're gonna be this virus, and we're gonna let this number go down and down and down, we gotta do the right thing. Give people their social distance, please, publicly, give them their social distance.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, uh, any citizens?
I got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry.
One of you need to clear it for me, some pastors still calling me about how many it's supposed to be, and I know, I remember when we first said, as you said, uh, uh, pastor and board and then 10 in the audience, will you help others from the congregation, how many it's supposed to be, will you put the other?
It would be 10, 10 in your audience, your congregation would be 10 spaced out the six feet apart, so, and most, most of our congregations are not having service, I know a lot of them are online, but there are a few that are, I know, uh, um, the Antioch Church has services, but they have less than 10 in theirs, so, but it is less than 10. 10 or less, I'm sorry, 10 or less.
What about, what about the pastor, with his board?
It's gonna, well, if they can keep a distance, they can keep six, six feet, um, Mr. Latimer?
Mayor, about what, what you know that?
Uh, well, let me, Vice Mayor, hang on just a second, I had, I had asked Mr. Latimer, uh, Mr. Latimer, 10 folks in the, in the congregation in the audience, is that correct?
Well, the, the way the governor's order reads is, it's 10 total, so yes ma'am, when you count everybody in the sanctuary, you're, you're, that number is what you're counting, 10.
Okay, so, all right, then in that case, I'm confused because essential employees were not considered part of that as it relates to, for example, uh, essential businesses or, or loads, is that, uh, so 10 includes the pastor and, and whoever else may be there?
That's right, and that executive order, uh, 1643, they made an exception for religious organizations that, they say they have to adhere to the CDC and Mississippi Department of Health Guidelines, they have to adhere to that rule of 10.
Okay, so it'll be 10, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, I cut you off, go ahead.
Well, that's, that's okay, the city attorney, uh, stated extremely well, so he answered it, I have nothing further on that, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, so the answer is 10 total, period, so pastor and however many make 10. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any citizens' comments, this is normally a time when citizens are able to come forward, and you have three minutes to state anything that you're interested in, that you would like the Board to hear, it's not a time when we go back and forth. So if anyone has anything from a citizen's comment standpoint, now would be the time. Okay, and seeing none, we will move to public hearings, we have two public hearings ahead of us, one is public hearing, consideration of a variance 20-02, it's a request from Donald Buckner Jr. for a variance from a rear setback at 104 McKinley Street in a TNE zoning district with the property 102A00-77.00. Dr. Kim, are you on? Hmm, okay, um, tell you what, well, I can't do that, my phone's not working, um, all right, well, let me see, is the, uh, is the applicant, Dr. Kim? Oh, okay, thank you, Dr. Kim, um, that is the, that is the area there, it's at McKinley and, um, Gates in the corner there. And Dr. Kim, let's see, a request for variance for a rear setback, 104 McKinley Street. Can we hear him, is he, are we just having audio problems?
I can, I can hear you.
Okay, all right, Dr. Kim, you want to scroll to the next, to the next sheet or the next page? Okay, and there's, all right, there's the house, um, I tell you what, let's do this, is the applicant here? Would you come forward, please, sir?
Aye.
And if you give us your name, and I'll let you kinda present your, your request, how about that?
All right. Got Kim, just tried to come in.
Okay, we've got photos, but I'm not, I'm not hearing anything.
My name's Donald, uh.
Uh, can you hear me?
Uh, now I have you, Dr. Kim, okay, hang on just a second, all right, Dr. Kim, um, I tell you what, I've got Mr. Buckner up here, and, um, he said that he can, he can kinda give us an idea, so we'll come back to you here in just a second, how about that?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Yes, yes, and let me.
Okay, uh, well, hang on, Dr., uh, Mr. Buckner is up here, and he's gonna, he's gonna give us his, his, um, thoughts about his project, and then we'll turn to you.
Okay, good.
Uh, November 5th, my house burned, it doesn't look like that anymore, and, uh, we're gonna rebuild there, and we're gonna put the house back, you know, similar to what it was. And I have a backyard that goes right up to the ripro track, and that's unusual, unusable most of the time, so what I'd like to do is, is move my house back to give me more front yard for flowers and, and, you know, make the yard look nicer, and, and use that space that we don't use in the backyard.
Okay.
And the variance is 15 feet, and I'd like to move it to 10 feet.
Okay, so you're asking for a five-foot variance?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, all right, then, anything further from you at this point? Okay, all right, Dr. Kim?
Yes.
All right, you're up now, all right, uh, Mr. Buckner has shared with us what it is he wants to do, do you have anything you wish to add as it relates to, um, what BOA did, um?
Um, not much, actually, the location is here on the screen, and this was the side photo before the fire, this is the after fire, actually, I took the picture a couple of days ago, and this is the whole building, uh, this is the side setback, uh, the applicant is asking 10 foot to have a front digit about, uh, 22 foot to accommodate parking area, and, uh, it missed the criteria and, uh, public notice was, went out, uh, right, and, uh, on March 25th, 2020, the Board of Aldermen Town Council recommended approval of 5 to 0, and the recommendation today is, uh, approval of VA 20-02, a request for variance to relieve from the rear, rear yard setback requirement at 104 McKinley Street from 10 foot to 10 foot.
All right, thank you, thank you, Dr. Kim, all right, I'm gonna open it as a, well, tell you what, uh, yeah, I'm gonna open it to the public hearing, so I'll do that, if you would step back, sir, we'll, we'll do that, and see if anyone here wishes to speak in favor of or against this particular project, so I'm gonna take this opportunity, I'll open it to the public hearing now, does anyone wish to speak in favor of this variance 20-02 located at 104 McKinley Street, anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, uh, open it for discussion with the Board, uh, Alderman Carver, do you have anything you wish to say?
After it makes, after everybody makes their comment, some of them make a motion.
You, you may go ahead and make your motion now.
First of all, I think coming up here, um, it's kind of a tight lot where it's at, we came by that day and the day after, and several days after that, uh, obviously, we're glad that y'all are okay, and nothing I want to concern, uh, I'm gonna make a motion for approval if the Board, uh, so chooses, but thank you first of all for coming up here, and, uh, that is a tight lot, and I don't think five feet really makes a drastic difference, but.
Okay, so I have a motion from you for approval, is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Vaughn, all right, um, Alderman Carver? Alderman Sistrunk, any remarks?
No remarks, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Little?
No ma'am.
All right, Alderman Walker?
No ma'am.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty?
Uh, no ma'am.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Perkins?
No ma'am, Mayor.
And Alderman Vaughn? All right, seeing no remarks and no further discussion, um, I will, um, we'll call for a vote, and, uh, if you would, answer aye or nay as the City Clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
All right, it is unanimous by vote of seven, seven to zero, motion carries, congratulations, and, and we'll look forward to you building, rebuilding, I'm sorry, rebuilding, okay, thank you. All right, uh, we have one more public hearing, which is consideration of, um, SE 20-02, it's a request from Lee Carson for a special exception to allow for an accessory dwelling unit at 607 Old West Point Road in SD 2, with parcel number 117L-00-001. Dr. Kim, are you still with us?
Yes, um, this is a request by Lee Carson for a special exception to allow for an accessory dwelling to be located in the rear yard of 607 Old West Point Road. The property is currently zoned SD 2, single-family, 2 unit per acre. Uh, the use chart requires special exception for accessory dwelling unit in an SD 2 zoning district, and the applicant is proposing to upgrade the existing accessory building for dwelling. Section 13.3.4 of Unified Development Code also requires the special exception meet the additional standards for that use. This is the existing building, uh, this is, has been used as a storage unit, and this is the proposed, uh, work, uh, work plan that shows the, um, the addition of the bathroom and closets, and we did a lot of, uh, the building work, uh, but it shows no kitchen facilities, so I'm gonna get back to this later. Um, the applicant is seeking a special exception to convert a existing accessory structure into an accessory dwelling unit, the existing structure is originally the house and was previously used as storage. It's currently opening, operating a bed, uh, bed and breakfast out of main building, and the accessory dwelling, uh, would be used as part of the bed and breakfast. The proposed dwelling is a one-story building with an exterior dimension of 18 by 20 for a total square footage of 360. Accessory dwelling unit shall meet the design standard under section 13.5.2 as shown on the screen. Section 3.4.1 of the UDC list of eight criteria for review and approval of the standard. The criteria are listed in the step report, and it is on, uh, screen for your reference. The request was noticed in accordance with the section 3.4.3.1 of the Unified Development Code. 20 property owners of record within 160 feet of the subject property were notified directly by Mayor of the request. A legal ad was published in the Starkville Daily News on February 19th, 2020. A sign was posted on the property in a conspicuous location. As of this date, the Planning Office has received one phone call against, uh, the request, uh, two emails against, one phone call requesting information, and one visit, uh, for favor. In the opinion of the planning staff, the proposed use associated with the special exception request does generally meet the criteria for special exception review and approval. Uh, there have been requested the two conditions by the, uh, DRC, uh, first one is the, the applicant shall obtain all required building permits for the used requested, and second, uh, there shall be no separate meters, uh, for the accessory dwelling unit, but an electrical disconnect is required, uh, for an emergency cutoff. Also, there has been a request to deviation from the, uh, use standard, uh, which talks about, which requires the, uh, kitchen and, uh, the, uh, shower units within the, uh, dwelling units, that is required, but, uh, the now applicant is requesting the deviation from section 13.5.2.3 requiring kitchen facility, because the kitchen service will be provided by the main building, uh, bed and breakfast. So at the March 10th, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, commission approved the, uh, special exception unanimously for the conditions and deviation recommended by the DRC, and, uh, today recommended motion is mobile approval of SE 20-02 a request for an accessory dwelling unit at 607 Old West Point Road with number 117L-00-001.00, with the two conditions and a deviation recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Development Review Committee, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kim, uh, Mr. Carson, would you like to come up and give us just a little brief addition if you'd like?
Few more details.
Okay.
Um, yeah, one thing I just want to point out is that is one of the existing tenant houses that's been on the property for 30 years uh, or more in that location, um, the, the structure is as old as the house, actually, but it was moved, uh, from one of the fields in the original plantation, and then moved up to, close to the existing house, and completely finished out inside, had a fireplace inside, completely usable as a finished out space, but when we did the original bed and breakfast, I knew I was gonna use it, but I wasn't quite sure what I was gonna use it for. Uh, and then we decided we were definitely gonna use it for another, uh, room to rent out, basically, uh, so, and we added the bathroom, and we did, like, it's swelling, the issue came up, or we had to get approved before this, both again, but that's the point about the kitchen will be, we won't add full kitchens, we might have a little kitchenette, so, thinking a whole, need for the microwave, um, and then the kitchen will be, uh, serviced by the main, main house.
Okay.
So we're basically adding just another rental, um, veteran.
Okay, thank you, well, I'm gonna open it for a public hearing. This again is a public hearing on the consideration of, uh, SE 20-02, which is a special exception for an accessory dwelling at 607 Old West Point Road. Do I have anyone wishing to speak in favor of this particular item? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Do I have anyone wishing to speak against this item? No one wishing to speak against, all right, seeing none, I will close it as a, uh, public hearing, and do I have a motion?
Move the approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver, do I have a second?
Second, ma'am, I'll second.
Okay, Alderman Sistrunk, I believe I heard you, Alderman Sistrunk, is that correct?
That's right.
That's right.
All right, Alderman Sistrunk, I have a second. All right, discussion. Alderman Carver, anything you wish to say about this?
No, ma'am.
All right, Alderman Sistrunk, anything you wish to say about this?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Little?
No, ma'am.
Alderman Walker?
No, ma'am, other than to say, uh, it seems like the comments that I saw for local constituents related to, uh, more, uh, additional dwelling units being able to be allowed on the, the property. Uh, Dr. Kim, it's my understanding that that would not be allowed by right if and when, uh, Mr. Carson or anybody else wanted to add an additional dwelling unit, that would require at a minimum, uh, either subdividing of the land or coming back and asking for some type of, so this, what we're doing tonight, who will not create a precedent for allowing more dwelling units on the site, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, uh, this, this, uh, exception, this property's in my order five, and, um, I have noted, I will note that there have been some, uh, some, uh, letter and some comments, uh, concerning this, uh, and, and I'm, I'm going to approve and support this because this is an existing structure, it's on the property, um, and so, um, I will, I'll be in, will be in support of this of that, but, uh, there, I did want to note the fact that, that, um, some neighbors are concerned about the possibility of additional structures on this, this property that could be used, uh, solely for, as one way for transit rental property, and so, uh, I do, did want to note their, their concerns, uh, about this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Beatty. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, and mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Vice, uh, I'm sorry, Alderman Vaughn?
No, ma'am.
All right, well, no further discussion, if we would please answer yea or nay, if the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
All right, uh, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Thank you. All right, Mr. Carson? Um, we next move to mayor's business, and, and here we have, um, the first item up is consideration of additional measures to address the impact of the virus on the city's budget and operations, and at Vice Mayor's very appropriate request, we've broken them out into three separate, three separate steps that I am recommending that the board take. Um, we obviously have no ability right now to control our revenue, and our revenue, because of the, the virus, the pandemic, we have closed, um, our, many of our restaurants have certainly, uh, been cut way back, um, and we are losing sales tax, we are losing, um, a good, a large source of revenue for us, and with that, we simply cannot continue to operate without acknowledging that and making some steps or taking some steps that will, uh, hopefully mitigate some of those, some of those, uh, issues of continuing costs and, um, reducing or, or, and, and losing revenue. So what I'm suggesting that we do, and I will just take them up one at a time, is we were scheduled for employee pay raises. We had planned on this back in September when we adopted the budget for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year, they were supposed to take effect in April, and I am recommending that we suspend those employee pay raises, and, and this is certainly not taken lightly, and I don't intend to make, uh, you know, to make light of the fact that this is, this is something that people had, I'm sure, counted on, but none of us knew what was going to happen to us, uh, over these last three weeks. And so, uh, these are extraordinary times that require, in, in my opinion, extraordinary measures, and this would be one of those. So I am recommending to the board that we have a sixty-day suspension of the employee pay raises that would take us, uh, to a pay period date of June the eighteenth, and, uh, obviously, if things do not improve and we don't get, uh, we don't get better results and there's not a, there's not a vaccine found and we don't come back out and start, um, participating in our community in a way that allows us to, to be together and to enjoy the, all the things that this city has to offer in the ways that we used to, then this may be something that we have to revisit, but that is my recommendation to the board. And I am, I will throw that open for discussion at this point in time, um, and we will take up the other two as we go along. So I'll, I'll start, I mean, I'll start, do we have, um, do we, is there a motion that would, uh, make that, i- is there someone who would make that a motion and we can go into discussion afterwards? But without a motion, okay, I have a motion. Alderman Sistrunk, do I have a, do I have a second?
Second, mayor.
All right, I have a second from Alderman Little? I believe that's correct. All right, now, discussion. Alderman Carver, anything you wish, wish to say about this?
Well, we've just come to the time, we thought about a month ago, you start thinking about if it's gonna get to a point we gotta take these, make these tough decisions, and, um, you know, i- it's nothing personal, I don't, I don't know that I'm gonna support any of these night or, or all, or two out of three, but, um, I'll just say this, in my opinion, is what's fixing to happen in the city of Starkville, because we're a university town, is the university's already more or less shut down to online classes, so, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel, this whole thing's over, and it's April the twentieth is kind of the, the best date in time, uh, if it's not over for the city of Starkville, you know, it's not like we're one of those communities where it's over in fifty to sixty days, that that's the end of the, of our tunnel, the light at the end of the tunnel, because the university is shut down typically the summer months in the city of Starkville, be some of the slowest, and we know that just because it's university town, so. I probably don't feel comfortable not with this first one, I am gonna probably vote for the next two, and just because to have some type of, uh, optimism to it, I'm still looking at that April twentieth date to see what's gonna happen then, um, so that's kind of my rationale, my decision tonight, but I think there's probably enough votes for this, and I, I don't think, I'm not saying, I know nobody on this board, but that's not a personal decision, I think that was a good comment you said, has nothing to do with reflection on our city employees, they're doing the best they can do at this time, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sistrunk?
I'd, I'd like to just say that sales tax, um, makes up about forty-one percent of our budget, and any, any sort of reduction is, is going to be, um, something that's gonna be difficult for us to backfill, uh, there's not gonna be some other revenue source that will allow us to backfill that. I think these are very reasonable first steps, I honestly do not think they're gonna be the last steps we have to take, but this will at least, uh, these steps will at least allow us another, um, another board meeting cycle to find out what sort of, um, help might be coming our way, um, from the next CARES Act, the fourth version that they, they are looking at in Congress. To date, there's not been anything that really, um, addresses small municipalities like us, and so we're, we're left to our own devices at this point in time, uh, for the most part, to, um, to, to make up this, this loss of revenue, and it's gonna be significant, um, it, it's going to be significant, um, and, um, again, I don't think this will be the last thing, I think it is a prudent first measure. I wish we were not here, I really do, we all wish we were not here, um, dealing with this, I, I, I think this was something that we all, um, know that, that is important to our employees, um, but, but keeping them employed at the moment is also important, and this is one of the things that will allow us to.
Thank you, Alderman Sistrunk. Um, Alderman Little?
Thank you, mayor, I also agree that it's, um, probably the prudent thing to do right now, and these, uh, situations seem to change daily, as you mentioned earlier, and, uh, I believe that, uh, a conservative approach during these drastic times is, is the way to address this, and we can come back and reevaluate it as time goes on the next sixty days.
Okay, thank you, and it is only for sixty days, it's the current recommendation. Uh, thank you. Uh, Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, what is our, what is our current cash reserve position right now, what I must say, we have cash reserve?
Um, hang on just a second, uh, Mr. City Clerk?
I did not bring those with me.
She did not bring them with you. Alderman Sistrunk, do you have that information at the top of your head?
I can tell you what we budgeted as our, um, beginning cash balance, and I can also tell you that, um, that that's a beginning cash balance as of September thirtieth, the end of our previous fiscal year, it's about a million and a half dollars, and while that sounds like a huge amount of money and enough to see us through anything, um, that we, we think we might lose with sales tax, that each year we spend that down the first three months of the next fiscal year. So from a cash flow perspective, if, if your thoughts are we'll spend up those cash reserves, then the next thing you need to be prepared to do is to figure out how we're gonna, how we're gonna fund the first three months of fiscal twenty-one. This is, um, this is not something I think we can just, um, spend, spend what we have and not think that it will not have implications for us longer term.
Mayor, I wasn't, I wasn't, um, you seen, there's no insinuation of, of mine to spend the city's cash reserve, I'm just asking, because I mean, I, I, I think that most cities that could have healthy, you know, that, that, we, I guess state laws, we're not supposed to budget for, for cash reserve, if you do that, you know, which actually takes, at the same time, most cities that have health, uh, budgets and revenue, you know, uh, do have some, uh, some of some cash reserve, I just didn't know what we had a two month, three month. Now, based on our sales tax, if our sales tax cuts, if, if, if it, let's say our sales tax goes to half, our general sales tax in the state of the city, which is an eighteen and a half percent diversion, seven, six sales tax, forget the local food and beverage and accommodation tax and stuff, we, if we lose that and, and the Sistrunks, uh, said that our sales tax revenue is four percent of our general fund budget, that means we're gonna lose twenty percent of our total general fund revenue budget if, if our sales tax cut in half. What is our general, what's the revenue for our general fund?
Twenty, we're twenty-three million, twenty-three million.
All right, so I mean, we, we potentially, of course, you parlayed it, we, we, we're four month, three months in, but you, that, that would be, if you were talking about twelve months, you'd be talking about over four million dollars in lost revenue, um, the city wouldn't be quite that much, but we, we stand to, to lose a significant amount of revenue if this holds and, and it goes six months, you know, if it goes three months, a lot, six months longer, that kind of thing, but, um, anyway, I, I don't know where I'm going, except to say that if cities are able to build some cash reserve for a couple of months of operation, you know, it'd be, I guess, often will be nowadays, uh, you know, uh, of, uh, you know, rep, of surplus or, uh, money to operate on, in the event that something like this happens, it's probably would be good to cities to do this, and next time we have opportunity to, to talk with legislators and people that, um, that set, you know, set up the state laws, set up our budgets and things, we probably need to talk about this, because no one saw this stuff coming, um, and, uh, this is a, a serious situation, not only for Starkville, all municipalities in the state of Mississippi and throughout the country just did not see this coming. Um, I yield back to Sistrunk.
Thank you, Mr. Beatty, and, and you're absolutely right, none of us, none of us saw it coming, and the kind of hit that we're going to take off of sales tax, uh, I was meeting with Judge Kelly earlier today, and, and their, their food and beverage is down, he's saying eighty percent, so, you know, if sales tax is off fifty percent between all of that, we are, we are looking at a serious shortfall, so thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Mayor, let me just briefly say that, you know, I'm gonna, uh, vote against suspending this tonight, I think that, uh, given all the discussion about the employee pay raise, I certainly respect the, uh, the comments from all of my distinguished colleagues, but based on the information that I have been provided with, that this pay raise would impact the general fund of sixteen thousand, a hundred and sixty-four dollars a month, and we talked about two months, if that's the case, the general fund impact would be thirty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And another way that I think we can fund this, and of course, I don't wanna get ahead of the next item, you know, uh, is that, you know, we can put a freeze on the hiring of those two positions, and we'll talk about that later, but let me just put one thing real quickly, mayor, and I'm gonna yield, and one thing on that parks director, mayor, I'm, I'm saying this early, give you some time to think about, you may not agree with me respectfully, but I think, mayor, as, I'm saying this for purpose of discussion this matter, I'm about to wind up real quickly, I think, mayor, it'd be a good consideration for maybe the next two or three months for you to be the acting, uh, uh, person in charge of parks and recreation, let me give you a quick basis for my saying that, is back, in, back during the two thousand and five to nine term, when you were the chief administrator officer, you filled, uh, very key essential roles, including, but not limited to, my recollection, being in, at least over the building department and some other departments in the absence of key personnel, so I think that's a point of consideration, because that person's always report to you anyway, you certainly are fully aware of the direction you want the parks to go, so I think we can wait at least sixty days to fill that director of parks and recreation, and maybe we can make, uh, wait on this water treatment operator, I think if we do that, those two things, then we can deal with that general fund, uh, impact, so that's all I'm gonna say on this, mayor, I yield.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor, before I let you go, I am gonna say I appreciate your confidence in me being able to do something along those lines, so thank you for that. Um, uh, Alderman Vaughn?
It just, it just bugs me every time, anytime we get ready to cut, we go back and we're gonna cut, first line of defense is one, and I'm doing the real work for, we just proved some big job, some big, big position, well, sixty to thousand, seventy thousand, and it just, it just, it just bugs me, you know, time to cut, and always wanna cut the middle, and always keep giving the big man away, cut the one that's doing the worst, it always comes from the bottom, it's never coming from the top, we love to come from the bottom, and these are first line of defense, these are the ones keeping our street, these are the ones keeping our school, these are the ones that doing the necessary, these are the ones that fight and fight, these are the ones that giving us the cure, these are the ones that doing this for us, but it just brings that we wanna go cut the one that, that, that's doing the biggest thing in the city for us, I mean, the engineers and all that, they do it in all those towns, and they do what I have to do, but who is the, who is the first line of defense? And we wanna go and wipe them out, I mean, how, what kind of incentive that gonna give them if we take this from them, and we promise it because it's in the budget, then we prove the budget, and we prove it that we give them, it's just, it's just, it's just, that's why a lot of businesses go out of business, so we always cut from the top, we continue, continue to increase as big as to keep, to increase them, we keep cutting the middle, and that's why they get a profit. I, 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 I take this for just tonight because these guys are the ones that doing the rain, flood, sunshine, snow, whatever, they still not doing the work, and, but we wanna cut down ourselves, put some of those stuff on hold.
Thank you, sir. Well, and let me say, there's not a one of us up here who wants to do this, but we also need to be mindful of the costs that are associated with running a city and the revenue loss that we are seeing, and, and this is merely a suspension with, with the hope that in sixty days, we're going to see that there'll be a turnaround, and that certainly is the goal, and that would be, that would be, uh, an optimistic position, so, um, and that's the reason I'm recommending it, I certainly understand the employee pay raises were something that they counted on and that we were, we fought to give them, and, and I think it's a, I think it's a shame that we find ourselves in this position, but I would rather give it to them after we're sure that we're going to make it through this than I would give it to them and then take it back because we can't make it. Um, so, anyway, all right, any further discussion, anyone, anyone else wishing to?
Mayor?
Uh, who, Alderman Little, is that you? Okay.
I'd just like to add that, uh, just because we can doesn't necessarily mean that we should, um, you know, I believe that we've been generous with our employees over the last three weeks and that no one has missed a paycheck, and we've, uh, been operating under reduced hours, and I think they would all agree that we've been very good to them as, in that regard, and, uh, what I'm concerned with, that our budget cycle's gonna be approaching in the next couple of months, that we're going to obviously have some shortfalls, I mean, MSU is out, they're not gonna be having classes this, this summer, they're gonna be online, we're not gonna have any students in town, hopefully they'll be back in August, um, we're gonna have some serious things to be looking at, and a budget shortfall's, I anticipate, and I think we should be really frugal at these times, and just because we've got some, uh, so-called rainy day money or, um, end of year, um, balance, we don't need to go robbing that right now because we don't know what we're gonna be staring at here in the next few months, so, I yield, mayor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Little. Anyone else?
Mayor, I want to correct, just.
Mr. Beatty?
Alderman Beatty, I just wanted to make one question, that I, when I said three months ago, we're, we're six months into it, there, I put since, since one, one October, so that was, that was incorrect on my part.
Okay.
I mean, to, to the fact that we have rainy day funds sometimes, this is exactly what rainy day funds are supposed to be used for, in some instances, so, I yield, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, if there's no, if there is no further discussion, then we have a motion from Alderman Sistrunk, we have a second from Alderman Little, um, if you would please answer yea or nay, as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Nay.
Alderman Sistrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
All right, by a vote of four to three, the motion carries. Um, next item up is imposing a temporary sixty-day hiring freeze on the city with the exception of Director Parks Recreation and the Water Treatment Operator to be reconsidered by the board at the regular meeting of June the and the Water Treatment Operator to be reconsidered by the board at the regular meeting of June the second, twenty twenty. And, um, I say that because although I am flattered that the Vice Mayor believes that I have the expertise to oversee the director, uh, the director position, my concern is not that in the next thirty days. My concern is that it's going to take us, particularly given the difficulty of the times, it's going to take us probably at least two months or longer to find someone. And so I think that, that timeline is long enough that, uh, hopefully we will have an idea of what's going on and we need to do a search. This is a very important position and, um, that is, that is the reason for, for saying that we need to go ahead and start that search and see if we've got someone who applies for it that would fit, fit our, our needs and fit with us. The, as for the Water Treatment Operator, the concern there is we only have one. And that water treatment is something that absolutely has to be done regularly or it puts us in serious jeopardy. And so if, for example, a, our Water Treatment Operator, our Soil Water Treatment Operator became ill, whether it's with the COVID nineteen or if it was some other illness, um, we would not be, we would not be in a position to have someone to take his place. And so that's the reason that those two are on there as exceptions to that item. So having said that, um, do I have, um, discussion? Alderman Carver?
Move approval.
I have a motion from Alderman Carver, do I have a second?
Second, Alderman Little.
Second for Alderman Little, thank you. Alright, further discussion, anything you'd like to say on the Carver?
I just think it's incumbent upon the department heads right now to really, they know who they're cross-training and who they're not. And this is a great opportunity to know within their, um, chain of command and org chart. There's probably gonna be some gaps and some, uh, inadequacies within each department, just the way that it is. And they need to be recognized now and I'm not looking for, uh, basically this water, uh, Water Treatment Operator position. That's just saying we don't have a secondary person that can take that. But maybe we need to be looking at, you know, if there's two people, we need a third. And that's just some things, department heads, it's your opportunity. I know we've got a, a couple online and some aren't here, but over the next couple of weeks, really try to, try to pinpoint some areas where, let's try to target through cross-training at least two to three individuals that can carry any type of essential operation, so.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Sisdrum?
No comments.
Okay, Alderman Little?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
No, Mayor.
Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, I came from a town with thirty-five hundred population, you moved, moved, we had two certified water operators. We have a fireworks director now, water superintendent, so the city decided we need at least two certified operators, possibly a couple.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Beatty. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Uh, Mayor, just very briefly, I'm in favor of the hiring, uh, freeze, but what makes me wanna vote against this motion is that it creates the exception for the two positions, but the hiring freeze, standing alone is trying, but I just don't like the exception. Nothing further, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn?
I hear about the problem, about some of these y'all, the fact that you're always trying to cross-train some of our own people. And I, I don't know, it's because of the salary that that person is, it becomes, I don't know what it is, but it's something unique. I was taught me to have a problem with cross-training. But every time we get ready, every time somebody meet, we gotta hire somebody instead of moving somebody in. I miss a lot of people in my life, and my family, I never get far short of here. One thing I remember, a lot of times, I, I cross-train here, 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 I can go around five people, still with the beat. But we, we cry like a baby then, but I think a lot of it's just that, when we all cross-train, because we got twenty people, we wanna put it in an area, but that's not fair. The next man is, is between the families, there's a thousand, there's like one in front of him.
Okay, Alderman Vaughn, okay, thank you. Alright, any further discussion? Alright, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sisdrum.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Okay, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. And then, uh, the third. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said nay, I apologize, uh, I apologize, six to one. That's the reason I call that out, is if I make a, if I make a mistake, I can get corrected, thank you. Uh, next item is suspension of all travel and equipment purchases for the next sixty days. Those exceptions that I am saying would be, uh, the exceptions for the things that are already funded, like ourselves with Sun Station and our wastewater treatment plant, those were already funded through bonds. And so, uh, aside from that, um, I am recommending that we, uh, suspend all travel and, and equipment purchases for, again, for the next sixty days. I heard a motion, Alderman Vaughn? Alright, I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, I have a second from Alderman Carver. Uh, now, we'll go through discussion, anything, Alderman Carver?
Obviously, if any kind of emergency purchase comes up, we recommend that, correct?
Sure, if we have an emergency purchase for a repair or something, absolutely. Okay, uh, Alderman Sisdrum?
No comments.
Okay, Alderman Little?
No comments.
Alderman, Alderman Walker? Alderman Walker?
No comments.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn? Alright, thank you. Alright, I have, uh, we have full discussion. Uh, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
Alright, that is unanimous, motion carries. Alright, next item, which was taken off the consent agenda, is consideration of the submission of budget modification number ten to increase the private investment line item from forty thou- forty thousand, sorry, forty, forty million to forty million fifty-two, two seventy-nine, sixty-six, I'm sorry, big numbers. Thus reflecting the actual private investment made through CDBG project number R one oh three, three forty-seven, oh one dash KED Starville Parking Garage. This garage, um, over the last three years, I have been dealing with us closing out this project and we are at the very last stage of this. And so that is the reason that, uh, it is before you, is so that we can get this, this parking garage closed out and off of our books in terms of what we have had to go through in, in, uh, reflecting jobs that were created and any number of other things that we had to meet in order to make sure that we were not in a position to have to pay back the money that came from this, uh, from this CDBG project. So that is the reason for this being on the agenda as of right now. Um, any, any, Alderman Carver has, have left, has left, left us momentarily, do I have a motion?
Mayor, so move, it's Alderman Little.
Alright, I have Alderman Little with a, with a motion, do I have a second?
Second, and may I make a comment, please?
Yes, you may, I'm gonna go through and make comments, I just wanted to get a first, um, a motion and a second and we'll go through discussion now. Alderman Carver?
No comment.
Alright, Alderman Sisdrum?
I, I want clarity for the listening and viewing public to say that this is a, a project budget that was submitted, um, to, on behalf of the city and the private investors. It does not impact our city budget in any way. It is, um, simply cleaning up what the private investor has paid or, or the investment that the private, um, investor has made. Um, no impact to us paperwork, as far as we understand it, it is the last piece of paperwork that we have to deal with, as you said, after three years of trying to get this, um, grant closed out.
Thank you, ma'am. And yes, it was, it was hurting Katrina, which tells you how far back it went and how long it's taken us to get it done. So yes, it is a, it is a closeout, so. Alderman Little?
I just say, I agree with Alderman Sisdrum, this is just a housekeeping issue and hopefully this will be put into rest finally after all these years.
Thank you. Alderman Walker?
No comment.
Alright, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No comment, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Vaughn?
One, Mayor, did we, did we do the recommendation on the highest process that we had, more than that, compared?
Yes, sir, we did. Yes, sir. Alright, um, no further discussion, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sisdrum.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Nay.
Alderman Beatty.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Alright, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Alright, and last under Mayor's business is consideration of a second resolution for the Mayor and Board of Alderman's to control of contagious and infectious disease and for the protection of public health and welfare and for related purposes. And this, ladies and gentlemen, came up, again, this is, I'm gonna call these extraordinary times and because of that, you're seeing things in front of you that you would not normally have seen, um, and certainly late in the game. But, uh, this is, I asked Mr. Latimer to draft this up based on, um, the issue that the Board of Supervisors yesterday had the curfew and I, I am sure y'all, as Aldermen, are, have been receiving the same kinds of calls and questions and does the city have a curfew, does the city not have a curfew, we need a curfew? Uh, what does it mean that the Board of Supervisors did a curfew and the city doesn't have one? And so in order to obtain some clarity, um, I have asked the, uh, city attorney to draft this up, which is similar to the one that we had before, it was a resolution two that did not pass. But this one asks for a curfew that mirrors that of the county. And in large part, I think what we've had in the past, and if someone wants to hear from the chief, he can certainly do so. But I was in conversation with both the chief and Sheriff Gladney yesterday about the fact that, um, when Lounes had a curfew and Clay had a curfew, um, it was viewed that Octobod County was wide open for, uh, people to come in and party and enjoy themselves during this time when we were trying to keep people at home. And so, um, with that, the supervisors, I think, under the, under the, um, auspices of assisting the Octobod County Sheriff's Department have established that curfew so that they're, the sheriff's department is very clear on what they can and cannot do and how they can operate inside the county. So from the city's perspective, I think the confusion arises to a certain extent that I don't want people to think that just because they passed through Octobod County, they could come into the Starville city limits and begin to have those same kinds, kinds of activities. And so I think it is prudent of us to mirror what the supervisors have done and establish a curfew that is like theirs, which goes from ten PM to five AM. Obviously, essential travel is still allowed in the sense if you're going to, if you're going to take care of, uh, if you're going to the hospital, if you're going to do something that is, uh, essential to, um, your, taking care of your family, those kinds of things, that we will, um, we will not prohibit that. But this allows those who know that they are just out enjoying the sights, that they need to be home. And so, um, that was the goal behind this. Mr. Latimer, would you like to elaborate on putting this together and under the, the structure of the statutes that you did so?
Yes, ma'am, I'll be happy to. So this potential resolution does three primary things. The first thing it does is it just formally adopts those executive orders promulgated by Governor Reeves. Those would be Executive Orders fourteen sixty-three, a supplemented, and fourteen sixty-six, and just makes clear that those apply to the city in whole. And it says that the city adopts the definitions in those orders of essential and non-essential businesses as well as the definitions of prohibited activities, essential activities, and essential travel. The second thing it does is it encourages essential businesses, even if you're essential, it encourages them to do everything they can, take all reasonable measures possible to ensure, uh, that they're complying as much as they can with CDC and Mississippi Department of Health regulations as it relates to COVID nineteen. But it also acknowledges the language in the governor's order that those essential businesses may remain open to the public to the extent necessary to allow them to operate at such a level necessary to provide those essential services. The third thing it does is establish a general curfew within the city limits of Starville. That curfew will run from ten PM to five AM. It starts tonight and runs through April twentieth, twenty twenty, which is also the deadline of the governor's executive order. The theory being we needed to align with that timeframe. The resolution also says if the governor extends the shelter in place order, then our curfew will, will extend along with his extended timeframe. Uh, and it also reserves the right for the city to issue any other orders or, or motions necessary to protect the life and liberty of the citizens.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Latimer. And I was going to read it, but you summed it up nicely and I don't think I'll bore everybody to death by just simply reading it. But we, assuming it gets, it, assuming it's passed by this board, we will certainly post it on our website and use it, uh, to put out, uh, via social media and all opportunities that we have available to us. So, uh, with that, do I have, um, a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion from Alderman Carver and sadly, because he's, well, not sadly, but he's, he's the first one I hear because he's right there, so will you make that a second, Alderman Sisdrum?
I will.
Alright, so I have a motion from Alderman Carver, a second from Alderman Sisdrum, and with that, we'll go to, to, to discussion. Mr. Alderman Carver, do you, anything you'd like to add to that?
I guess, I've got two, two points of clarification. One is, uh, City Attorney Latimer, I forgot, uh, I watched you all those years on TV, how you have that TV mania and, uh, TV face. Second, to Alderman Little, I guess I apologize publicly, he said, uh, never say never. What happens when you're the only city out of four locally that doesn't have a curfew? Then you got an influx and a paradigm of individuals from all kinds that come over. It's almost like if the only restaurant open in town, uh, you're gonna have all the business. And in towns like this, we don't know necessarily, we need all the business. And, um, we saw that, my personal opinion and talking to people, um, within the law enforcement community and just especially in my area of Greensboro Historic District, saw an uptick of, uh, of different areas and situations that warranted, uh, my opinion that this is time for this. Secondly, uh, Board of Supervisors did a thirty-day, I think, and I think this is, word is exactly correct and the fact that we're gonna go with what the state government says on their timelines and their guidelines. So I thought that was, uh, superb on our part and City Attorney Latimer drafting this, April the twentieth deadline. Um, the only thing I had, have any reservation with is the govern, if the governor extends, pass April twentieth, uh, the curfew also modifies and rides with that. I, I take some reservation in that, but I'm not gonna vote against that tonight. Um, you know, again, this is something, light at the end of the tunnel for, to me today and to be optimist, to be an optimist about it is April the twentieth, to see when we get there. Um, hopefully we can look back and this is a, a great motion. Um, but I, I definitely think it's time for this. Um, that's just not for the city's citizens of Starville, I think that's all citizens to know in the Golden Triangle plus the Louisville area, uh, to stay where you're at, seven hours is not asking too much. Um, it's just from ten PM to five AM, it's not asking too much. So yes, I will be voting for this, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Carver. Alderman Sisdrum?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Uh, Alderman Little?
I would just say, Mayor, and add, um, that law enforcement have their hands full right now with everything going on and I, I think this, um, will help them during the late night hours, uh, keep people off the streets and, uh, help reduce their, uh, workload and, uh, keep everyone safe going forward. So I'm gonna support this tonight as well.
Thank you, Alderman Little. Um, Alderman Walker?
No comment.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Beatty?
Uh, no comment, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
Mayor, just bear with me a, a brief few minutes, uh, just wanna get to the point. Uh, Mayor, let me just say, I am not against a curfew, but I would like to ask the city attorney just about two or three questions. Mr. Attorney, are you giving the board an opinion that, uh, that the, uh, stay-at-home order that was issued by the governor, Executive Order fourteen sixty-six on April one, twenty twenty, is a twenty-four-seven curfew, meaning seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day? So that is in, in effect a curfew statewide. So is this resolution, which includes a curfew, is it legally necessary or legally mandated?
No, sir.
Well, Mr. Attorney, I'm trying to, and, and of course, I want everybody to understand I'm in favor of law and order and a curfew, but if the governor already has a curfew in place, what additional effect, if any, Mr. Attorney, would this, would this, a resolution including a curfew have inserted for municipality?
From a strictly legal standpoint, I don't think it makes any difference, Vice Mayor, because the governor's executive order applied to the city and the Starville Police Department had enforcement power under the governor's shelter in place order. This is just another way of saying it, but I don't think it is a tighter restriction or an enhanced restriction or has any more legal teeth than what the governor's order originally did.
Mayor, I yield the floor, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Attorney, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And, and, uh, Vice Mayor, I have been trying to send that message out on a regular basis to people when they have been, uh, I've been tweeted at, I've been, uh, Facebook and, and emails and just telephone calls. And for, for whatever reason, uh, it does not seem to penetrate that a curfew is exactly what we have now. But curfew seems to be a word that everyone is, uh, very comfortable with and understands as a strong measure. So. so while, you know, you're absolutely correct, it is not something that we need to have, it seems to be something that people, that resonates with people in their understanding of what, what we're trying to do, which is keep everybody safe and keep them at home, so I appreciate what you're trying to say, and I, and I think that, I think we could keep doing what we're doing, but I think the answer is that people have a greater understanding of, of the word curfew than, than anything, so, thank you, sir.
Mayor, let me say one last thing, and I want to be real clear, I'm going to be done for the night, and the only reason I'm going to vote against this is because of the responses that I got from the city attorney, and legally, there's not legal requires, I just want everybody to be clear, I'm not, I'm in favor of enforcing the governor's orders in our municipality, and it requires everybody to stay at home except for those who engage in essential travel and essential activities, and given the fact that the attorney said everything he did, that's why I don't think this is necessary, and I respectfully appreciate your comments, but that, I wanted the media and everybody who's listening to be clear that this is the only reason why the Vice Mayor is going to vote against it, because we have the twos in place that we need now. Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Alderman Vaughn?
No comment.
All right, we have no further comments associated with this agenda item, I have, I'm sorry, Alderman Beatty?
Mayor, I have to make one statement, ask question to our, our city council, differentiating these two, the governor's decree and what we're about to do with this vote, is that this will be punitive, this will have a fine, or this will have something attached to it, that, that, does the gov, does the governor's decree have a fine or a something, or, or with this, that is somewhat, you know, does, does there any difference between those two, council, if you can?
Yes, sir, and, and there is no difference. The governor's order did establish a fine and established the city with enforcement power. What this resolution does is it just points back to the city ordinance, so the only difference, or maybe even a benefit to this resolution, is that if our officers gave a ticket under this resolution, then they could statutorily cite a city ordinance to take into municipal court, which may or may not get more traction in that setting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, anything, thank, thank you, Mr. Beatty, anything further? All right, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sisdrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries, thank you. All right, next item is under board business, and it's consideration of the continued administrative leave with pay for city staff. If you recall, we put that in place at our board meeting, which was March the 17th, basically three weeks ago, it's been a while, and, and so we have been working our way through that, we have a number of people who have cycled, rotated through work, and some that have been off pretty much the whole time, but we're trying to continue to use folks and give some relief as we are able to cycle through with this, but this is an opportunity for us to continue that administrative leave with pay, at least until the 21st, which is obviously two weeks from now, and again, going back to our concerns about cost, I think, I don't know how long we can sustain this, but I believe for another two weeks, this is something that we should continue to do, so. I have a motion from Alderman Vaughn?
Second.
And I have a second from Alderman Carver, discussion. Alderman Carver, anything to discuss?
No comment.
All right, Alderman Sisdrunk?
I do think it's important that people are aware that this isn't sustainable for the remainder of the fiscal year, but two weeks won't make or break us, it does give us an opportunity to see, have a little better feel for how our revenues are going to shake out over the rest of the year. It also gives us two more weeks to find out if there's going to be any assistance offered to smaller municipalities like us. I think this is one of those things where we are feeling our way through it, and I'm going to support this tonight, if it comes back a third time, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm going to be comfortable supporting it a third time.
Thank you. Alderman Little?
I would just say the same thing, as far as sustainability, I'm going to support this tonight as well, but beyond the next two weeks, I'm not sure we continue to be in uncharted water, the CARES Act has not addressed municipalities as to any reimbursement that we may be able to seek down the road, hopefully that's going to change in the next couple of weeks, we have no assurance of that. I was curious if the city clerk had any kind of numbers as far as what kind of impact it's made over the last three weeks on those that did not actually report to work, the number of hours, and what monetary amount that might be.
All right, hang on, Alderman, Mr. Carver?
It was approximately, we added a month, it was approximately, in short, slightly less than $50,000 was paid out in credit administrative leave.
Did you hear that, Alderman Little?
About $50,000, is that correct?
Approximately $50,000.
May I make a comment?
Alderman Little, will you allow for Alderman Sisdrunk to make a comment?
That's fine, I yield.
Alderman, Alderman Sisdrunk?
I'd, I'd like to, to let Alderman Little know that one of the things that we're finding is that, that, that there was maybe some misunderstanding about how those hours got coded, I think that number was probably a little high because of that, and our department heads are also starting to, as they're feeling their way through all this, they're starting to find ways that they can have people work in, in maintaining the safety, the safety distancing, and work from home, so I think that the number, I think the number was a little high, hopefully it will be a little lower this next pay period.
Thank you, Alderman Sisdrunk. Alderman Little, anything further?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Alderman Walker?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Beatty?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Perkins?
No, ma'am, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Vaughn?
No comment.
All right, thank you. Seeing no further discussion, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sisdrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, by a motion, by a vote of four, seven to zero, motion carries, it is unanimous. All right, and we're, we're winding down, ladies and gentlemen, we are getting to the last two items, one of them is consideration of a special event.
Mayor, move, approve, Alderman Little?
All right, I'm going to take Alderman, Alderman Little, and would that be a second from Alderman Carver? All right, we have a second from Alderman Carver, any discussions? Hearing none? You notice I went through, without going through ward by ward, right? All right, if you would, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sisdrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
I apologize, I didn't see, I didn't hear from you, so I, I, I'm sorry, yes, I feel sure it will, because it has in the past, so I feel sure it will, the answer will be yes. Yes, and I appreciate that, thank you, and I, and I apologize for skipping you.
Okay, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. And then we have the claim socket, so do I have a motion for the claim socket? I have a motion from Alderman Carver for the claim socket, do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Beatty, was that you?
Little.
All right, Alderman Little, second, discussion. Alderman Carver?
No, ma'am.
Alderman, please answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sisdrunk.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Beatty.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn?
Yea.
All right, by a vote of five to two, motion carries. Okay, and last but not least, I'm going to read the language calling for a work session,[1722.65]